Under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Well.
Bram Cassoun, Tobin.
Here.
Liner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
John Francois.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Correspondence.
Nothing this evening.
For the good in the city, we have the police chief presenting a presentation.
Good evening.
Almost full.
Over the last several weeks, we've had some discussion both in here, in the police commission and in the community meetings, in regards to implementation of the body worn cameras in the police department. This evening, you will see a presentation from the vendor that I've been working with over the last several weeks on the platform that we're looking to implement here in the city of Middletown. As I've mentioned to you in previous meetings, the reason I chose this vendor is due to the fact that they've been in business for quite some time. They're a very reliable, well-rounded company that's proven, has proven success, and they're one of the only vendors out there right now that has a complete package, which means the body camera itself, the hardware, the software to run it, the storage, the redaction software as well. So it's a complete package, comes with training, and as you'll hear this evening from the vendors themselves, what the features that this product does have. So, from here, I would like to introduce from Axon Connor and Stephanie, both the sales reps that I've been working with over the last month, month and a half.
Stephanie, you're unmuted.
Looks good.
All right, thank you Mayor DeBeno, Chief Wanchu, and City Council for allowing us to join you this evening. Stephanie and I are the Axon reps who have been working with Chief Wanchu for a few months and have learned quite a bit about Middletown. Stephanie and I work with police departments along the east coast with 51 to 100 sworn officers, just like the city of Middletown Police Department, to roll out tailored solutions such as this. Tonight, we're here to give you all a brief overview of the Officer Safety Plan presented to Chief and Middletown PD, and answer any questions you may have. But first, we'd like to begin with a short video titled "Everyone Gets Home Safe." Eileen, if you could play that first video for us?
We have more in common than we tend to think. No matter who we are, or where we're from, we all want the same thing. To come back home. Safe. And that's our mission. We are reinventing modern policing. We are Axon. We've designed training, software, and less lethal weaponry to protect life. Software that reduces paperwork so officers can prioritize what really matters to their community, like helping others in their greatest time of need.
All right, Robert, do you want to copy and read?
We've designed body cameras that capture truth to provide transparency and accountability for all, and empathy training that helps de-escalate incidents safely.
I'm here to help you. We can go outside and get some fresh air. We're gonna figure this out together, all right?
All these tools come together to give officers the chance to protect life without taking life. So that we can all come back home. Safe.
Okay. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
All right. We did so, we changed our names at Axon to reflect the breadth of our public solutions. Yes. Stephanie, you here?
Connor, I'm sorry, the PowerPoint is not showing here on our end.
No worries. Can you see it?
There we go.
Perfect. We have the privilege to work with thousands of law enforcement agencies across the world to address and solve public safety's biggest challenges. Axon's vision is to make the bullet obsolete, reduce social conflict, and ensure criminal justice systems are fair and effective. We believe technology has a huge role to play, and Axon is uniquely positioned to solve these problems. Body cameras capture truth and provide transparency where there was none before. Signal technology allows, along with the power of artificial intelligence, can help ensure cameras are always on when they're supposed to be. Live streaming video, Aware Plus as we like to call it, bind with our other real-time situational awareness data, can dramatically increase the safety of officers and the communities they serve by putting eyes directly on life-threatening and use-of-force situations in real time. VR empathy training can also help officers put themselves in other shoes and be better equipped to listen and de-escalate before they act. Today, officers spend up to 40% of their day on paperwork. By streamlining officer workflows with powerful AI-driven tools like Redaction Assistant, you're reinventing policing by ensuring more of their time can be spent building constructive relationships in the community. Our next step is focused on how we can better engage with our communities. We serve public safety, and public safety serves the community. It's on us to listen to community members as well as we forge ahead on developing new technology. We need to listen to the communities now more than ever, which is why our founder and CEO, Rick Smith, is coming through. At Axon, we will seek out community input and feedback with all products. We will actively conduct voice of customer sessions with community members to ensure that our existing products and future product development is reflecting the needs of the public. And we will continue to engage law enforcement leaders across the country to reform body worn camera policies. And here's our Axon Body 3 camera. Axon Body 3 isn't just a camera. It's a rugged communications beacon front and center on every call. With our new Axon Aware Technology and LTE connection that enables GPS and live streaming, Body 3 empowers officers with more support in the moment. Coupled with enhanced low-light performance and reduced motion blur, that means clearer evidence in the now, more efficient AI-powered processes after the fact, and most importantly, safer communities in the long run. Our Axon Body 3 also has full-shift battery. It's built to mimic the human eye with field of view and capture. We have a configurable pre-event buffer, and your department will be receiving upgrades of the Axon Body Camera with each refresh every two and a half years. So this is how your officers are capturing evidence or will be capturing evidence, and here's how that fits into our full ecosystem. By choosing Axon, Middletown will have access to an ecosystem of hardware and software designed to communicate with one another during those critical moments in the field. By implementing our solutions, the city can expect a cost-effective approach focused on equipping your officers with high-quality Axon Body 3 cameras and tasers, easing administrative burden so that the department can have more significant presence in the community, and providing a digital evidence management system that has tools to help the department remain compliant with ever-evolving policies, laws, and mandates. To help bring the city to the forefront of technology as it relates to law enforcement, Axon is proposing a solution comprised of the components on this slide. To highlight a few, Axon Body 3 cameras and mounts, Aware Plus or GPS and live streaming capability, Axon mobile applications like Capture, which help officers utilize their smartphones while protecting evidence chain of custody, Axon Evidence, our cloud-based system that consolidates all of your department's digital files, making them easy to manage, access, and share. That evidence is securely stored in Microsoft Azure's Government Cloud, and any activity is captured in audit trails to ensure chain of custody and evidence authenticity. We have implementation and training for officers and administrators as well, and our newest Taser 7 with signal connectivity. And now I'll hand it off to Stephanie to discuss that connectivity and a few other features of our solution.
Awesome. Thank you, Connor. And as Connor mentioned just now, the Officer Safety Plan does utilize Axon's double-shot weapon, the Taser 7, which is going to provide officers with the confidence of deploying on duty with both our redesigned Close Quarter and standoff cartridges. With the redesign of our cartridges and the probes, officers are now able to deploy the Taser confidently as close as four feet from the suspect and still achieve the 12 inches of probe spread needed to achieve neuromuscular incapacitation. In regards to the Taser 7 as well, as you can see on the slide, there is a button to the side there, which is going to be our warning arc button, and will be a great added de-escalation tool to the officer's mouth. As Connor also mentioned, with the signal technology of Taser 7, it does integrate with Axon Body Cameras. And so, when officers turn on their Taser 7, every Axon Body Camera that is within the area in a 30-foot radius will also automatically turn on and start recording. And with that Bluetooth signal to the cameras to initiate recording, it's also going to ping out another Bluetooth signal for the next 30 seconds for any officer that arrives on the scene after the Taser was turned on, so their cameras will also turn on and automatically start recording. Additionally, the Officer Safety Plan boasts further training for the department with our Hook and Loop Training cartridges, which we also reference as HULF for short, along with the Hook and Loop Training suit. That way, Middletown is able to practice situational training and further prepare for any situation where the Taser may or may not need to be used. As Connor had also touched on, we will be providing an Oculus Go virtual reality headset, and this is to provide some additional mental health training for all officers. The virtual reality headset will have two scenarios for officers to work through currently. Axon will be releasing more scenarios as they're developed, but the first two scenarios that are released is going to be a scenario with a suspect who has autism and a suspect who has schizophrenia and suicidal ideation. With this headset, officers are going to be able to not only work through the officer's point of view, but also the suspect's point of view as well. Additionally, in a national training laboratory study, retention rates for learning were 10% or less for traditional formats, whereas virtual reality had a retention rate of 75%. We wanted to provide everyone a quick glimpse of what officers would be going through with the Oculus Go virtual reality headset. So, Eileen, if you wouldn't mind, would you please play video two?
Get the light, I'm working on my best friend, but I can disconnect it. I won't let them get my head anymore. I can't just unplug the cable box, I need to unscrew the connection. I'm not stupid. I need to unscrew the connection. I need a screwdriver. You just have to find it. You always lose. Loser. Lost. 4,000 satellites in space, no one knows about them. Listen to me. Listen, you don't listen. Listen, listen. You don't listen! Listen! Maybe they don't know. The FBI makes YouTube take it down. They take the video down. They always take the video down, and someone always puts it up again. You just have to find it. You always lose. Loser. Lost. Listen to me! They need to know.
Who sent you here?
Maybe you don't.
Who sent you here? Why are you here? Are you working for them?
Put your hands up! Put your hands up! Stay right there! Stay right there! Get in there now! Go on, Kyle! Stay right there! Hey, get on the ground now! Get on the ground!
We have a mother calling for help. She says her son is schizophrenic and currently on his meds.
Hey, Diaz, can you cut the lights off?
Yeah. Hello, ma'am? Hello? Ma'am? What's going on?
It's my son, Kyle.
Relax, relax.
Okay.
Who the heck are you?
Oh, hey, hey, Kyle.
Why are you here? Why are you here?
Kyle, my name is Officer Morgan, okay? This is my partner, Officer Diaz. Hey, hey, partner's got a screwdriver. He's holding a screwdriver in his hand.
No, she's...
He's got a screwdriver. Kyle, listen, listen. I want to talk to you, but I need you to put that screwdriver down first. Kyle, put that screwdriver down, just toss it to the side for me, okay?
Perfect. Thank you so much, Eileen. And for that video, that is what officers will be working through for the schizophrenia scenario, to show you what that would look like, and being able to actually hear the suspect's point of view and then go through the officer's point of view, it's powerful. And with that, neuroscience has proven that the activity that happens in your brain when you're experiencing a 360-degree video using virtual reality goggles is the same type of brain activity that happens when you are in a new place. Because of that, your brain is thinking that you're actually in that place, and the result is that officers will then better understand and remember the message of the virtual reality scenarios that they went through and be able to apply it in real life. And Connor, I will pass this back to you.
Thank you, Stephanie. In closing, Axon and the City of Middletown Police Department are working to deliver a solution with predictable annual spend and the best technology in order to increase officer and civilian transparency and safety. Everyone deserves to get home safe. With that, Stephanie and I would like to open it up to questions. I apologize for the technical difficulties on my end, and I appreciate, again, you allowing us all to join this evening.
Thank you. Anyone from the council have any questions about the presentation? Alden Johnson?
At the beginning of your presentation, you referenced Redaction Assist, and our mayor indicated that redaction of tapes could be very time-consuming. So what does your program do, and how does it do it? And very clever that you named yourself Axons. Thank you.
Absolutely. So with Redaction Assistant, Redaction Assistant is our artificial intelligence technology. What we've done as a company, we work with departments over the last 10 or so years on redaction, and we said, what are the things that you are most commonly redacting? That's MDTs, that's screens, faces, and license plates. What our artificial intelligence does is it will read and redact those things in a piece of evidence that allows you, or your officers, or the administrators, to let it run, and then come back to it at the end, manage that redaction, and hopefully spend less time. We find that with the redaction tools we have on evidence.com, administrators spend about seven hours during that single hour of video or evidence. With Redaction Assistant, that's cut down dramatically to one hour per a one-hour piece of evidence. So Redaction Assistant, a great tool for departments.
Sounds too good to be true, but I'm sure it isn't. Thank you.
Anyone else? Toby?
Besides the costs for the equipment and the training, are there other costs, like on the backend, like hardware, storage, like do we need to upgrade our electrical facilities to charge these things? I'm just curious. And then, you know, if you get an iPhone, it's, you know, it always has a certain amount of lifetime before it needs to be updated. Is there a cost for the updates? These new videos that come out through Oculus, would they be additionally charged? Are they free? I'm just curious.
So the first question I can answer as far as the upgrades and hardware and stuff within the station. We had our IT person speak with the IT rep from Axon to address whatever hardware we would need on our end. It's about a $2,000 investment to bring us up to where we need to be. As far as the docking stations, we currently have docking stations that run off a 110. We would put in another outlet wherever we decide to put them in, so it would be minimal cost.
Nominal, yeah, it's not...
Yeah, minimal, yes.
Okay, all right. And how about the updates for the videos? Would they put that, is that included? Like, they come out with additional training scenarios? Is that...
Virtual, with virtual training? Yeah, so we are looking at a 10-year program that would have all of the updates and software licensing for that 10-year program. Year one, we would get all new hardware. Year two and a half, at the two-and-a-half-year point, we would receive all new body cams that are updated with the most current versions. At the five-year mark, we would receive another version, the next updated version of the body cams. At year six, an updated version of the Taser, whatever it may be at that time. Seven and a half years would be body cameras again, and at 10 years would be the body cameras again. And then throughout the year, throughout those other years, as software is upgraded and updated, we would receive those updates and upgrades as well.
And then, my last question, sorry. I know we had that school incident, but it sounds life-threatening. Could you turn them on just to record if you...
Basketball game, me?
Yeah, yeah, the kids, when they're getting out of control, like, could you turn it on to...
Yes. So there's a manual, the ability to manually turn it on, and then there's remote abilities, as they're showing in one of the situations we're speaking about with the Taser. When the Taser's deployed and activated, they automatically trigger. We're looking to also have some other devices attached to ours, such as when the lights in the cars go on, or your weapon is drawn, those types of things. Or, as you're asking, I believe it's just tapping it turns it on manually.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No questions from the council? All right. Well, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you again, all of us.
For the good in the city, Eileen, anybody on?
Not at this time, no.
Okay. Remarks to the mayor?
Yes, good evening. I'm going to thank Axon for the presentation, Connor and Steve. As the chief said, we've been working on that for a few months, primarily he's been working on it with his staff. And it's also part of our panel discussion, the panel required by the governor to review police practices, so. But let me begin tonight with a tropical storm warning. I think we've somewhat weathered the storm. We did have a few, quite a few trees down, Houston and Academy, Fulton Street. Chief is going to touch on the phone issue that's throughout the city and 911, but no major flooding, some basement flooding. Chief Lewis, when I spoke to him this afternoon, had a full crew. We were, the fire department and the volunteers were on standby, so I think everything went pretty smoothly. We had a couple complaints from residents that they were not unhappy that they had a lot of rain in their driveway, and I don't know how you stop that with a tropical storm, but for the most part, I believe our infrastructure improvements that we made over the last few years have proven to work. I think there might have been a little issue on Sterling Street, a little, but the West Main seemed to be working correctly, at least when I was there. And so if you have any flooding issues, please contact us and let us know what's happening in your neighborhood. We will be out cleaning up drain basins. If you see your drain basin near your house is full of litter, usually a heavy rain like that will pick up litter in the street and bring it to the drain basins. It's wise to clear it, but we'll also be doing clearing and street sweeping and all those things that you do after a storm. So, thank you for your patience, and I want to compliment Jacob and the emergency services, police and fire, for all they did during today's craziness. Onto COVID. We are still number two in the county with 1,188 cases, and it's somewhat steadied. As you can see, the New York State is still around that 1% positive rating, which I think can be attributed to the good decisions of our governor, Governor Cuomo. But we're still getting some non-compliance locally, and primarily the skate park. You know, we're trying to keep the facility open. The police have been there handing out masks. We've put up signs, but we can't man it 24 hours a day. So we're going to need cooperation from the skaters if they're going to look forward to keeping that facility open. That, I had a contact from a few of them who said it was difficult to skate with a mask on, so we understand that. But a lot of it is socialization on the perimeter of the skate park or sitting down. You must have a mask on when you're doing that. And otherwise, if our positivity number starts moving up, then we're going to have to do what the governor's doing with other facilities, and that's closing them down. So, once again, we're asking for cooperation. In Orange County, five bars and restaurants have been closed down because of violations. There is a state police task force and a state liquor authority task force out. I know one barber did contact me and told me that his establishment, he gave a haircut, and he was questioned a couple times about taking off his mask, and at the end of the haircut, the guy paid for it and told him, "You passed," was investigating. So, if someone's looking for the quick buck, I know with employees, sometimes they don't take the guidance from the employer. I don't know what penalties are in there for an employee violating the rules. I hope they're as strict as they would be for the employer, but people need to pay attention to the rules. I know firsthand that there's also warnings given out to some other bars and restaurants, and people need to comply. Otherwise, you're going to jeopardize your liquor license. This was a picture. We had a senior club. They met at Davage Park for their meeting, and as you can see in that picture, they all had a mask on. But if I showed you all the other pictures, you'll see that a few of them did not have their mask on, and they were sitting close to each other. So, if they're going to schedule another one, we're going to have to let them know that it's not acceptable, and that why can some sit there with their mask on and others not? And so I don't know what the issue was, but we'll be having a discussion with the Golden Age Seniors Club. Parker Rec Updates. Chris, I know she had some home issues with trees and a whole bunch of things, but this was an email from Chris. Chris, do you want to speak to it, or you want me to just go through it?
Go ahead.
All right. She decided that they will delay the opening of the preschool program until January of 2021, and they'll be doing the evaluation in December. The small group programming has begun. Groups are limited to 12 people, and temperatures are taken on arrival. They're taking all safety measures. I know a lot of people are looking for us to do something because of, you know, for their kids to do, or daycare, or whatever they want to call it. We're just not in a position to offer these full services and with the confidence that we can keep your kids safe. Pavilions have been in huge demand. For the most part, people are following social distancing. Five teens through the summer employment program have been working at the disco golf course. It says disco here, but it's supposed to be disc. Back to the Massey days, the disco, right? And the program is through Bosse's. The Lions Club will be doing a virtual fishing derby. How that's done, I don't know. But Sparrow, you're in the Lions Club, and maybe you're going to elaborate a little bit on that.
I will.
So am I, but I don't know how it's done. And all the planning for the fall programming has begun. The response to the new rec center has been tremendous for the people that have been there. All we're missing really is a lot of kids. I know last night, I believe it was, they had a flag football, and Chris had talked about some of the other previous programs, all within, you know, using safety and measures. It's not just an opportunity to go out and tackle each other, or it's more training, soccer training, and how to kick. But the, so we're trying to expand on some of the programs, and some of the programs that we've offered that are usually popular have been canceled for lack of signing up. So there is still that concern and that fear of people and parents of signing their kids up, as you saw in New Windsor or the eastern part of the county. Two-day camps, um, had a, um, COVID outbreak. I think one had 17 or 19 people, including many children. Georgia, 277 kids in one sleepover camp, so it's a serious thing. The school district did cancel, um, uh, in-person schooling for the first, I believe, at least five weeks. Um, I, I know a lot of parents have contacted us, um, some not knowing that the school district is, is independent from the city. But I, I do agree with their decision, and I, I think they're doing the right thing, um, for protecting, protecting the kids, so. Um, but you can direct your anger to the school district, and, uh, but, uh, I for one do support their decision. Some, and if you notice, uh, Highland Avenue, West Main Street, Franklin Street, that's the beginning of the sidewalk program. Uh, this is part of the federal aid project, it's a total of about $4 million. We've been talking about it. These are the streets that are being done under this portion of the program, so, uh, there will be, um, many more added to this, including, um, many streets downtown. It's three buckets of money, most of it funded by the federal government, but the project is underway, and the granite curbs look nice. The project across the street is doing well. Um, I don't know how it's doing after today's downfall of rain, but, uh, but the, um, they did start to move after some minor issues with, um, the building, the old buildings being buried there. Um, the chi- we talked about the police, community police, uh, panel, and, um, the cameras were one of the issues that we have discussed there. Um, as I said before, we've been talking about it for many, many years. Um, we were looking to mirror the state police program, and we never pulled the trigger on it, and, uh, I, I believe now is the time. The chief has conveyed to us that it is an investment, and Sparrow, you touched on some additional other than the cost there. It's gonna be a good hundred to 100,000-plus per year for a police officer to administer this program. So, um, it's a 10-year expenditure of 1 and 1/2 million dollars over 10 years. We will probably do it through the operating budget because it's an annual expenditure, not a, we're not spending all the money upfront. Um, so it'll probably, it'll impact our operating budget by about a quarter of a million plus per year. So it's a significant investment, but I think it has a, um, significant returns. Um, and you've seen, you know, in, in the past, at least from my perception, uh, police officers were opposed to it. Um, I think that has changed over the last few years, and with the current environment, and I think the technology has changed, and, um, so I think everyone will be comfortable with the system that we're going to advocate. Um, obviously, the end is you folks have to fund it during the budget. I can tell you it will be part of my budget presentation to the Board of Estimate, and, uh, but it, it is a, um, I agree with the chief's decision to go for the top shelf. Um, especially with these times now, we're gonna see a lot of fly-by-night outfits come out that, um, we see with technology changes. And so I think a, a company that's been in business this long and it has top-notch products is probably the way to go. Our next meeting of the panel will be next Tuesday, right here. Uh, the last three topics that we're gonna discuss are decriminalization, right-to-know, and over and under policing. And, you know, they're pretty broad, and we're hoping to have a, about a two-hour meeting and get input from the panel. Um, the, after that, that will be the last panel discussion, um, unless the majority of the board feels that we need to have another, I don't believe we do. Um, we will then submit a draft report, prepare, the administration will prepare a draft report to the panel, uh, submit it to them. Uh, we will then have a public hearing by the panel, um, regarding that draft report. Uh, written comments from the public will be solicited. Um, we'll give at least a few weeks, or a couple weeks, for people to comment. All comments and all, uh, questions will be made part of the record. Um, we will then present to the common council and the police commission the final report and the draft report, and you folks will have, um, and I believe it's under the, um, guise of the governor's directive, is that eventually you have to be the body to adopt it. So you'll have an opportunity to amend, edit, or accept, question the, um, the chief, myself, and whoever else you'd like to question regarding what we're presenting to you. So, uh, we will get it to you and, and give you adequate time, uh, to make those decisions. It must be adopted and filed with the state by April, so we're on a pretty good schedule right now, and, uh, hopefully, um, uh, this will be the last meeting, and then holding a public hearing in September. There's a resolution tonight to accept the, uh, sale of the Clemson Park House. Uh, we had a minimum bid of 350,000. Um, we did accept a 375,000-dollar bid on it. It has restrictions, deed restrictions on it. It's gonna be helpful to us as we try to meet our revenue goals for 2000 and, uh, 2020. As you know, sales tax revenues and all of those are, are, um, projected to be much lower than they were last year, so, uh, sales like this will certainly help us meet our goals for 2020. Also, um, on August 13th, the RFP is due for the former recreation center, um, that's the old Academy Avenue School. Uh, so anyone who's interested in purchasing that building, you can arrange with us to take a tour of it. Um, bids are due by 4:30 on the 13th, and we have a minimum bid price on that of $500,000. Uh, we'll sell our field bids, we did rebid this. Um, we're gonna, yeah, the original bids came in much higher, um, the, the bids were now pre-COVID, and, um, and so we've cut the project back, not, not cut the project back, we, we brought some of the work in, in-house. So the Phase 1 is gonna be field, track, and some electrical lighting in, uh, Phase 2, and also the parking area. Uh, but the biggest part of the project will be the drainage in Part 1. So, uh, they'll do this Thursday at 4:30. The Paramount Project continues, two of them, both the rigging and audio project are near completion. That's about a quarter of a million-dollar project, uh, improving the sound in the theater, uh, with the hanging speakers, and also the renovation of the firescapes in the front, uh, of the theater, restoring it. Um, we've hired A.J. Coppolo, he's an architect who is in, um, his expertise is historic renovation, and these are ongoing projects. One of them was funded through the state, and the other was funded through the city. Uh, the coronavirus, um, uh, program for small business relief, uh, we still have money available, um, otherwise, we're gonna have to reprogram the money. So we're hoping that, um, that some businesses will be interested in this program. It's up to $5,000 at 0% interest, and it can be for working capital, unlike our small business loan program that is fixed asset. Um, you must meet the eligibility requirements of HUD guidelines, uh, contact Maria Bruni's office. And of course, the census is, we have to mention it once again. Uh, Nobody Lees Mid Hudson has been having, um, helping us quite a bit at the farm markets and, and at the grocery stores. We are still at 54.1% on our self-response rate. The state average is 57.1% or 57.4%. And, um, Port Jervis is about three points ahead of us on response, and Newburgh is about 14 points behind us on response. So we need people to fill out the census. Um, if you're a parent and you have kids, this will affect your kids' funding for schools. And, uh, if you're looking at your tax bill, it's gonna affect your tax pa- your, your tax bill or services, so please fill it out. And that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to.
Any question for the mayor, Almond Johnson?
Uh, two questions. Um, I have some big branches down, I'm sure others do. Is that something DPW will help remove, or is that part private?
No, we'll put them out, and we'll, um, I haven't talked to Jacob about it, but in past storms, we have, um, gone around picking up, we'll just ask for people's patience, because there's a lot of trees, a lot of branches down. But put them curb-side, cut them up if you can, into, you know, smaller sections, but, um, but notify, call the office, and, and we'll make arrangements for it. But we're gonna be going around doing a lot of cleanup.
Okay.
Yeah, well, so we'll, we'll take care of that.
My other question, there was chatter in the media with the DA Hoofler with participating in a body camera program, did that go away?
Uh, his participation was gonna be for some of the hardware, and I think for a limited number. Uh, I, I don't believe it went away, I think those discussions will continue, but, um, it's not going to be a, uh, when you're talking 150,000 a year for 10 years, I don't think we're looking at a significant amount of money. I, I think he's looking at the, chief, correct me if I'm wrong.
But there might be some participation?
There will some, there will be, at least what he's told us, unless it's changed, that there will be some participation by his office in purchasing some of the cameras.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, Chairman.
Um, mayor, since you mentioned, uh, census again, um, I don't know if people are aware, but the Census Bureau is saying they're gonna end the counting at the end of September. So they've shortened it by a month, it was supposed to be the end of October. So it becomes even more urgent.
And those decisions are made so that communities like Middletown don't get counted.
Yes.
Believe me. And we, um, uh, it's more difficult to count in urban center, we know that, the demographics, and, um, first they extended it to October 30th, you're right, now they've shortened it back to September 30th. I don't know if enumerators, which are the people who go door-to-door, have been going door-to-door in Middletown yet, they don't notify of us. Caitlin is handling it for us here, I know she's been in contact with the regional census people, and, um, Nobody Lees Mid Hudson will be at the farm market again this weekend. We are providing some funding for brochures in both English and Spanish, um, but we do need a big push.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
Remarks to the department head, Economic Development, Commissioner of the Bridge Authority?
Good evening, everyone. Just, uh, to touch up, we had a CDA meeting this, uh, this evening, and, uh, we completed 186 Wickham Avenue, and that's going to closing. We started 198 Wickham, so we're really, um, moving at full steam on, on the houses, and next meeting, we talked about also trying to bundle some of the properties throughout that are hard for us to, uh, to rehab. So, uh, we'll have those discussions at the next meeting. I know the mayor touched upon, um, Paramount and Clemson. Uh, you see on the agenda, FATN has, uh, to extend their, uh, development goals on 84 Dorothea Dix. Uh, they are, uh, because of COVID, obviously, they're looking to complete that entire building by October 2022. So, uh, just request your support for the extension on their development goals this evening, and that's all I have.
Any word for Maria? Thank you, Maria. DPW Commissioner?
Good evening. Basically, the mayor, he spoke about the storm. We had three inches of rain fall in two hours, and that was a tremendous amount of rain, but, uh, our drainage infrastructure worked very well. Uh, we did have some issues in isolated areas, but shortly after the rain stopped, everything drained away. Uh, we had some trees that were down, and we still have some, um, intersections. The traffic lights are out, there's three of them, um, Cortlandt North, James, and West Main or Canal, and West Main Street, and Highland, and, uh, Wickham. So as soon as the power is restored, uh, obviously, the lights, hopefully, should be, they'll be coming out, and if they are, uh, if the processor is not, uh, fried, then, uh, it will, uh, it will work. If not, it will be on flash. One side will be red, flashing red, that means you have to stop. The other side will be flashing, uh, orange or yellow, which means that proceed with caution through the intersection. In the meantime, we have installed stop signs, manual stop signs at those intersections. That means everybody approaching the intersection must, must stop, must, must treat it as stop intersection. So those are the stop signs, when you see them, they're across from City Hall right now, but hopefully, as soon as the power is restored. Uh, there's, uh, I think there is quite a few areas in the city are without power, and, uh, Orange and Rockland are working, is, is working on it, to restore it. Um, for, um, for Alderman Nancy, the reservoir levels, um, as of yesterday before this rain event is about 98%, which is, we're, we're in very good shape. And, um, before you, you have, uh, we have several resolutions tonight. Uh, also, I wanna just extend my thanks to the water and sewer department. They were out with waiters and, and so on and so forth to try to open up catch basins and, and, uh, keep things running, and address any flooding, and cleaning up, which has taken place in the areas that were flooded. And the street department were a measure of help as well to the water and sewer department, so my appreciation for both of them, um, for both of those departments. Before you tonight, we have four different, three different resolutions, at least, for DPW, so I'm not gonna, you had the long, well, you had the long presentation, so if you have any questions about them, I'll be happy to come and address them. One is for, um, fuller engineering to, for structural design for a sidewalk that has collapsed at King Street Building and Center. One is for WSP for adding additional intersections to the traffic operation study, which should be out for bid on October. And two more proposals from Clark Patterson Lee for, um, uh, for the water storage tanks, adding one water storage tank to be rebuilt and repainted. Other, um, water storage tank will be, uh, removed from the scope of work, and other, um, other, uh, water storage tank will be added to the scope of work, and that's because of budget limitation. We had to change some money from certain project to another project, so we had to lose some, uh, water storage tank. The, uh, 24-inch water line from the water treatment plant down to Manhattan Avenue, the contractor is gearing up with his insurance, and hopefully, we're gonna be starting very soon, um, with the construction. Uh, the water pump station construction has started at the water treatment plant, and work is in progress. And, uh, we're trying to resolve some issue with the contracts for, uh, the screw pumps at the water, at the wastewater treatment plant. The mayor addressed curbs and sidewalks in there, it's gonna be very beautiful, take a look at it right now. One side has been done on Highland Avenue, the other side across the street is not done, so it would be nice to take a picture before, of, of the, and, and see the contrast between the two, the granite curb and concrete versus the older one that was broken up and in bad shape. I think it's gonna be a major improvement for our, throughout the city, those granite curbs and sidewalks, and we appreciate your support. Any questions?
Any question for Jacob? Albin Tobin?
The piece of property we're purchasing, is it a large piece, how many acres of?
Oh, that's for the watershed?
Yeah.
Watershed, I believe it was, uh, I should have done my homework on that one. I, I believe it's, uh, 80, uh, 80-plus acres. But the, the important thing about it is, it was, uh, it was engineered for over 40, uh, lots subdivision, individual homes around the Shuangan Kill with septic tank, individual septic tanks, and individual wells. And we were very concerned about it, and, uh, you know, if it comes to be approved, say, for 30 individual lots, I mean, they're shooting for 40-plus, but say they approve 30. Uh, so this way, we have, this area is gonna be preserved forever green. Um, the state obviously is paying for 75% of this funding, and we're paying, we're responsible for 25%. Uh, everything is falling into place regarding the purchase of this property. We, we're very excited about it, it's very, very important property for preserving our watershed, rather than having 30 or 40, uh, individual homes with septic and wells.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Anyone else? Thank you, Jacob. Fire chief?
Hello, everyone. Um, I'll start off with the, the storm today. Um, you know, we had numerous calls, uh, a couple trees, large tree, like the mayor had mentioned on, uh, Academy Avenue there, a couple basements. Did the storm details and everything, um, and that all went well. And we also have a crew, crews at all the fire houses now with the phone systems that are down, they're all manned at this time as well. Um, not sure where I've left off, off in the past, so, um, June 1st, Thrawn Atkins was promoted to, uh, fire inspector. Doing a phenomenal job, and, um, in regards to LoSAP, um, I know I had talked about it in the past, um, and now municipal law has been passed. Um, it will have to go to a, uh, resolution, um, to be voted on by the council, um, to, um, award, um, members up to five points among. to award members up to five points a month for the months that we were out on COVID without being able to have meetings and activities. So I'll present that to the proper channels and hopefully bring it to a resolution, and we'll be looking for your support on that. Also, well, I've had to make a lot of decisions as chief in the last two and a half, almost three years here, but one of the decisions that we made today was the parade. Looking out for the safety of the citizens of Middletown, we feel it's best that we cancel the parade for this year. We will hold it, providing COVID is backlash, I guess you want to call it, or gone, hopefully. We will hold the parade next year in 2021. The only thing we will hold this year is we will hold our inspection night, which we'll be able to keep within the guidelines of the CDC for inspection of the firehouses. That will be held October 9th. So we had 77 calls for the month, and actually, with the COVID situation, we kind of expected the call volume to be higher, and it's actually been kind of on the low side, which, like I would, is good.
Any questions for the chief? Alderman Massey?
Chief, I'm sorry to hear about the parade. I think your reasoning is a really good reasoning, and especially that this is your last year as the chief, but I'm hoping that something will be worked out for next year with you involved in it.
Yes, that's, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, chief. Police Chief?
Good evening once again. Most importantly for me to discuss this evening is the phone service for all emergency services here in Middletown is down. There's an issue with the Frontier Communications Building. It's not just our phone systems, it's also the 911 system as well. Our primary system, as well as our backup system, is down. AT, or yeah, AT&amp;T cell phone towers, I'm told, are also down. So we're having a little bit of struggle there. What we have done to help provide the service to the community is we're operating our dispatch off of two cell phones. I will put them out. We've also sent them out via Nixle and social media. So for anybody listening, if you need to contact the police department prior to the Frontier system being brought back online, we can be reached at 845-283-5442, or 845-283-3914. Just one more time, 845-283-5442, and 845-283-3914. The officers are in and around the communities, just in case there is a need for them. So anybody in the community that does need police services, please reach out via cell phone or flag down an officer. Just a few quick follow-ups in regards to the presentation this evening. I know it's kind of difficult doing presentations via the Zoom and having someone else's presentation streamed to us. So I apologize for the technical difficulties that, that incurred this evening. The cost of this project, as was mentioned a little bit earlier, is, prior to discounts, it's almost a $2 million project over 10 years. It's $1.964 million. By doing a 10-year project, we get a discounted rate. We just, the discount is $531,000. So it brings us to a total 10-year cost just for the Body Cam program is $1.433 million. Breaks down, we pay an annual fee of $143,000. As the mayor had mentioned, there's some other additional costs. I know Alderman Tobin, you had mentioned one, some of the, the back-end IT hardware. We have had our IT person speak with Axon's IT, and as I mentioned, it's a very minimal upgrades on our behalf there. So that's not too, too much of an issue for us. And then, as the mayor said, the personnel. This project would not be successful without personnel dedicated to manage it, especially in light of today's environment and criminal justice, with all of the discovery demands. The body cam footage becomes a discoverable material. So every second of body cam footage has now, has to, has to be reviewed, every camera footage that involves an arrest or an interaction that may lead to an arrest, has to be reviewed and forwarded to the District Attorney's Office. So it is going to be very time-consuming. The vendor that I brought before you this evening, as I mentioned, they're a one-stop shop. Basically, they provide all of these services. They're one of the very few that are out there right now. When you look at the cost associated with the body camera project, the camera itself is the cheapest portion of it. It's $699 before any discounts. The cost is associated with the software, the licensing, and the storage. You're talking about a tremendous amount of storage for video. So that's where that, it's an extreme cost, I understand that, but that's where it goes. We would be looking at outfitting every one of the members of the police department with a body camera. That would be 70 at our current staffing levels. The program that is being presented also, as part of the program, they would provide us additional cameras in case there's any type of damage, or if one of them goes out of service, it's not that we wouldn't have an officer have their camera available to them. One of the features that I believe is one of the best features that this, this product has, which I don't believe it was shown this evening, is they have a buffering feature. So basically, the camera is basically always recording, but it records over itself. So if the camera is activated, whether it's manually or triggered by one of the devices, we could set that buffering from a few seconds back to two minutes. So what that means is it's going to capture up to two minutes prior to being turned on. So even if the officer's involved in something, and they manually turn it on, it's going to capture whatever that buffering window is previous, which is a very nice feature to help us. So in the heat of the moment, sometimes tunnel vision and stress and so many other things come into effect that the officer may not immediately think to turn that on. That's why we like some of the features that they come on by themselves, and they have that buffering feature as well. To just further expand on the question asked about DA Hoofler, he did mention, and we haven't really solidified anything with it, but he did mention that he will have some money towards the purchase of some of the body cameras. Again, as I mentioned, the real cost is with the software, storage, licensing, and whatnot. So, any questions?
Any questions for the chief?
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Chief, would you come here a minute? Fire chief. Please. Get my glasses. I can't see this.
Speak up.
Superintendent of Recreation.
Make my presentation short. The mayor covered very well a lot of the discussions we've been having in our department. And we want the public to know, this isn't easy on us either. It's the last thing we want to do. Pools not being open. We thought, we talked, everything. And we're seeing towns around us and lakes around us closing down because it's not working and it's not safe. So we are making the right decisions here, and we're not doing it lightly. Anybody from the public, if you have questions, call. If you're upset, call. We can explain, we can explain our angle. However, we're still trying to get some things done, like starting tomorrow, 9:30 tomorrow morning. You can call the Rec Department. I think we have nine families. We're going to be walking, doing family walks up at the reservoir. So for people that aren't sure of doing the trails by themselves, we can socially distance. The police department is also going to be up there with us. So it's a time for everybody to be together. And we're going to be doing them the next few Wednesdays. So somebody in the public, if you're interested, you just have to call the Recreation Office. We just need your family's name, how many people will be coming, and a phone number, just in case we cancel. We have fly football going, we have basketball going, but there's skills. We're not playing in a game. It's doing skills. So people are staying socially distanced. Tennis is kind of naturally socially distanced. Every person, when they come, their temperature's taken, it's recorded, and we're doing everything we can. We're finding programs, we're trying for younger children. They are not signing up. As far as the preschool, we made, with the guidelines that had to be followed, a three- or four-year-old having a first-time school experience should not be that. It's not going to be positive youth development. The guidelines are insane. They would be isolated, they would be masked. And the other thing is, we had about 14 pre-registered, like in May, for the 2020-21 school year. That dropped to four kids, because parents are taking their kids out. So people are calling, we're people on a wait list. We're going to stay in contact with them. We're going to see what happens with the schools, and we're going to see what happens with COVID. And we always add new people in January 2021 because they change the age. That's when we'll revisit it. So if you have any questions, please, please contact us. September, we start our stroller walks, which is in the morning. It's a great time for mommies to get out with little ones. Again, we can socially distance. That's up at Davage. And we were able to take a few summer youths with the disc golf, like the mayor covered, and they're out there social distancing, but they're finishing off that disc golf course, which is going to be beautiful with 18 holes. And a lot of the public is going out and using that. And we're going to be running a clinic where you can socially distance, and we'll be handing out some discs to the public, so you don't have to go purchase them. And really, that's all. We're trying in public, please, please call us. Please call us, and we'll answer any questions you have. This is nothing we're taking lightly. We want to be working, we want to be out there. I think we're working harder than we do when we're running programs, trying to think outside the box.
Any question for Superintendent? Thank you very much. Public hearings and grievances.
Okay, tonight, we have a public hearing on a proposed amendment to the zoning code 475-21-1, DMU Downtown Mixed Use District. I will read the amendment. Please take notice that the City of Middletown Common Council will hold a public hearing via, via teleconference and live on Channel 20 for viewing on a proposed amendment to the zoning code 475-21-1, DMU Downtown Mixed Use District. To add, Section 1, the Code of the City of Middletown, Chapter 475 zoning, B, and it is hereby amended by replacing paragraph subsection C of Section 475, 21-1, DMU Downtown Mixed Use Districts, to read as follows. "The first-floor street level of any building located in the DMU zone must be commercial use and as allowed in this 475-21-1, as the same may be amended from time to time. Residential uses of the first floor of any building or structure located in DMU District are prohibited unless waived by the Planning Board in its sole discretion, subject to the conditions and restrictions. A full copy of the proposed addition to the zoning code is, was available in the City Clerk's Office, Room 12, City Hall, 16 James Street, and also on the city website. In order to ensure health, safety, welfare of the city residents, the Common Council will not have public at this public hearing, but will be televised on Channel 20. There was also availability to participate at the time of the meeting, and also email comments may be submitted in advance to the City Clerk." By, this is by the order of the Common Council, City of Middletown, and also, it was published in the Times Herald Record on July 23rd and July 24th, and also on the city website.
All right, public hearing is now open. Any comments from the council? Eileen, any comments from?
No, none at this time.
All right, the public hearing is now closed. Petitions, complaints?
Nothing this evening.
Remarks of Alderman, Alderman Tobin?
Just like to say, as far as the Lions Club and the City of Middletown Fishing Derby, unfortunately, we had to cancel it. But we are trying something new. We're trying a virtual fishing derby, August 15th and 16th, and coordinated with the city. It's kind of like a picture contest. So we'd like, if you want to bring your child out, ages 5 to 15, fishing over the weekend of August 15th and 16th, any pond, lake, or stream in the area. Davage Park is a great place to go fishing. And you could take a picture of the fish and post it on your social media. And there's instructions on our webpage that do that. And we're looking for, you know, contests for largest fish, ugliest fish, best-dressed angler, sibling, parent and child fishing duo, and funniest photo. And so we're just looking for ways to get, you know, kids out, outside, fishing with their family, and in a, you know, safe way. So we're trying something new this year with COVID. And I'd like to thank the city for being so flexible with us, too. As far as, I'm also a teacher, and, you know, I know the schools are developing their plans, and the governor's going to come out with a decision this week. I know, I just ask for your patience. You know, whatever, every plan that we could come up with, there's drawbacks. Nothing's better than in-person teaching in the classroom. So I just ask that you be patient. Our teachers are working, trying to develop, you know, new ways of teaching they've never done before. There's talk about teaching in the class, having it livestreamed to home, split sessions, hybrid models. It's, it's all complicated. But we're going to be working overtime, trying to make it as best we can for, you know, our students and your children. Just remember, you're your child's first teacher. I know this is going to be a tough year. I have two children. I know I'm probably going to have to, you know, it's not going to be homework after school. It's going to be, you know, probably a lot longer, trying to make sure my kids get all their work done during the school year. So, so please be patient. I know that, just like today, you know, today, we had a tropical storm. This COVID is a natural disaster. This year's going to be a tough one. So just be patient, please, with us. Thank you.
Alderman Green?
Thank you. First off, I do want to thank all the departments of the city, fire, police, DPW, water, sewer. Today, you know, may, may not have been as bad as, as some had predicted, but it still had a big impact on the city. So thank you for everyone who was out there doing, doing your jobs and, and keeping everyone safe, and then everything going as smooth as possible, and who are still out there doing it now. We did have a meeting tonight of the Planning and Economic Development Committee, just to speak on the resolution and the public hearing that was before us. So we look forward to that going through, hopefully, passing this evening. And Alderman Kleiner and I will be having a Second Ward Constituents Meeting. It will be this coming Monday, the 10th, at Davage Park. I did get notice, it's the Lions Pavilion. And we're going to do it starting at 6:30. So 6:30 Monday, the 10th, at the Lions Pavilion, we will be having our Second Ward Constituents Meeting. Other than that, I just hope everyone stays safe. Have a great night. Thank you.
Alderman Johnson?
Thank you. I appreciated the body camera presentation this evening. I support the project. I think it'll enhance both safety and self-confidence for our staff and law enforcement. So hopefully, the council will move forward with that as well. Thank you.
Alderman Ramkunshun?
All I'd just like to feedback on the Axon presentation is that I do work and contract with a number of law enforcement agencies nationwide, and more than 80% of them use Axon in particular. It's successful, it's easy for them to use, it's functional, and it's the best thing that ever happened to most of them. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. I agree with Alderman Green. I want to thank everyone who helped keep us safe and keep the city cleaned up today. Police, fire, DPW, and all the people who make sure when a storm like that comes that we all stay as safe as possible. It could have been worse, but we certainly were right in the middle of it for quite a while. Second Ward Constituents Meeting, you know, in spite of the fact that some people think that caring about other people and caring about their well-being is an infringement on their liberty. It's a strange interpretation of society and the Constitution, but you can wear your mask to our constituents' meeting. We would feel better. I see that they had a sign on the post office last week. It was no, no cards, cash only. Not a lot of people doing that these days. I assume their card reader was down, but we don't know what's going on with the post office, and we know that the powers that be are trying to starve it to death, and putting a campaign fundraiser in charge of the post office, and then making sure they don't have enough people to deliver the mail, and all for political reasons. So call your congressman, call your senator, call anybody and say, "The post office needs help." You know, it's the only agency that was forced to pre-fund their retirement out for something like 70 years. Ridiculous. So we need the post office. We've had it since the beginning of this country, and we should support it, and the government should support it, especially through the COVID crisis. And lastly, this, this time of year, it's something I always think about, because I know some people who survived it. But the Thursday, the 6th, is the 75th anniversary of the dropping of the atomic bomb on Hiroshima. And the New York Times headline the next day said, "Shakanoa." And the Times Herald, Middletown Times Herald, I believe, had an article that said something like up to 5,000 people may have been killed. Well, we know it was 100. Well, we know it was 100,000 people. And three days later, the second bomb was dropped on Nagasaki. And then on the 15th, Japan did formally surrender, although all the agreements weren't signed yet, but, so that's, and that's before, I think, our next meeting, is our next meeting's the 18th. And the 15th was really the end of World War II, and 75 years ago, so Victory in Japan Day is something to think about, and think about all the lives lost, and think about that war, where people fought against fascism. They fought to support democracy, small d, and we're still fighting to support democracy. Thank you.
Alderman Jean-François?
Yes, good evening. I'd like everyone to be courteous to our men and women that's out there working with DPW and sanitations. Some areas are very dark, you hardly see, so they're out there, just keep in mind, be careful while you drive, and be on the lookout for our men. Thank you.
Alderman Burr? All right, I have to go back one. I have to apologize to our city clerk. I completely looked over it. Remarks from department heads. John, I'm sorry. Please, anything?
It was just, yesterday, I was known that there's going to be seven medical medallions available for the taxi. Those will be advertised in the newspaper and also on the website, so just keep an eye out for those. And what you'll have to do is come to the city clerk's office and fill out a form, and there's a $50 deposit, and it will be first come, first served on those. And Jackie Welch will make those decisions at the police department. That was all that I had. Thank you.
There's no unfinished business, new business.
There were resolution by Alderman Green to allow limited residential usage of the first floor of the commercial mixed-use buildings in the DMU Downtown Mixed Use Zoning District.
Resolution by Alderman Green, second by Alderman Tobin. Comments, questions? Roll.
Ram Cassun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez. Sorry. Resolution passed. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, granting the state of New York authority to perform adjustment of, for the owner and agreeing to maintain facilities adjusted via state let contract for the Heritage Trail project.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, second by Alderman Kleiner. Any comments, questions? Roll.
Ram Cassun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ram Cassun, to approve two agreements with CPL in regards to water tanks.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ram Cassun, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Comments, questions? Roll.
Ram Cassun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ram Cassun, to approve two agreements with CPL in regards to water tanks.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ram Cassun, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Comments, questions? Roll.
Ram Cassun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, to approve a supplemental agreement between the city and the WSB for traffic operations.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François, seconded by Alderman Burr. Comments, questions? Roll.
Ram Cassun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Alderman Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, to approve the request of the Faitian College to extend their economic development goals for 84 Dorothea Dix Drive.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Ram Cassun. Comments, questions? Roll.
Ram Cassun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Alderman Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, to approve the request of the Faithian College to extend their economic development goals for 84 Dorothea Dix Drive.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Ram Cassun. Comments? Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. Just from the historical society point of view, for the old timers, this is, this is the old West Group building, and it's amazing that they are doing this in, in any amount of time because we thought the building couldn't be saved. Thank you.
Any other comments? Roll.
Ram Cassun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Alderman Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, to authorize the treasurer to transfer $2,000 within the Middletown Police Department 2020 budget to cover the cost of new laptop training, computer, and VLA office software program.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, second by Alderman Jean-François. Comments, questions? Roll.
Ram Cassun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ram Cassun, to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $85,000 from the general fund balance to cover the remaining costs for the East Main Street to Orchard pathway project.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ram Cassun, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Comments, questions? Roll.
Ram Cassun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, to approve the purchase of the property SBL 16132-22.